Thank you and good evening again, President Katzeberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, distinguished board members, and Mr. Zeeman. I sincerely hope that the summer months have been relaxing, fun, and an opportunity for our entire school family to recharge and enjoy time with family, friends, and loved ones. As a reminder, school begins for the 2025-2026 school year on Thursday, August 21st for students in ninth grade, and on Friday, August 22nd for the rest of the student body, except for kindergartners, who will start on Wednesday, August 27th. Until then, please continue to enjoy the final few weeks of your summer. I begin this report with an important update regarding my and my administrative leadership team's analysis of the most appropriate and positively impactful steps to be taken for our students and district in light of the reality of a declining enrollment over the last decade or so. The community needs to know that my administrative leadership team and I recently looked at current student enrollment information, and we will continue to look at trend data of the past 10 years. Such a trend compels our immediate and continued attention and will have a significant impact on many varied considerations going forward, including facilities, personnel, scheduling, class sizes, and more. Please note that the best interest of our students will always be the primary factor driving my decision-making and recommendations to the board, closely followed by my and my administrative leadership team's intention to affirm the community values about which I know our citizens in our neighborhoods intensely care. As many of you know who closely follow our board meetings, a group of local citizens issued a demand letter earlier this summer regarding the work of the Elementary Task Force and their findings, and who convened over the last 12 months. While the Lakewood City Schools has every intention of upholding state statute and complying with Ohio Revised Code in light of this letter, the enrollment decline in Lakewood City Schools has been an ongoing issue in this district and will continue to be going forward. One compelling our attention and requiring our action. While this has delayed us, I am pleased to report that we are pressing forward with our continued analysis of enrollment data and trends. After careful review and consideration of all necessary information by me and my administrative team, I, as superintendent, will make a thoughtful recommendation to the Lakewood City Schools' Board of Education. The process we're taking going forward may look different, but the Lakewood City Schools will uphold its responsibility to make sensible suggestions to the board that affirm students' best interests. While I understand that change can be scary and hard for some folks to accept, as superintendent, I have little choice but to examine the enrollment decline trend and develop a path forward. That examination and that effort are underway by my administration. Ultimately, after our careful review of all considerations by me and my administrative leadership team, I will make a recommendation to the Board of Education at some point throughout the year about what the district can and should do in order to address its enrollment decline. Doing nothing relative to the matter may no longer be an option. As my administrative leadership team and I contemplate the enrollment challenges facing the district and what the right steps for the community are to address those challenges, the community can expect transparency through regular updates from me through my superintendent's report and various other communication channels. I and my administrative team must collectively arrive at a recommendation point, which will therefore inform my recommendation to the Board of Education. Consequently, the community can expect that my administrative team and I will continue to analyze this important issue, and I will prepare recommendations to make to the Board of Education aligned with the best interest of our students, our school community's values, and with utmost fiscal and educational responsibility possible. You can expect more updates on this matter as we begin the 2025-2026 school year. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you Superintendent Nizwicki for that update. We appreciate all the time that you, Treasurer Zeeman, and the administrative team have put into this effort over the past year, and especially over the summer in response to this letter. We look forward to your recommendations, and thanks again for everything you've done, and thank you for your leadership.
We've had some questions about the timeline recently, so just to be clear, it was always that at the earliest the task force would wrap up in May and a recommendation would come shortly after. It was never definitive. And then at the earliest, any changes would be made in the 26, 27 school year, but it was nothing definitive.
Great question. The timeline for any decision being made from the beginning was that I would make a recommendation to the Board of Education, and then the Board of Education would vote on a recommendation. When a Board of Education receives a recommendation, the vote doesn't occur that day. There is time for them to consider my recommendation. With that being said, we have always stated that any changes to the use of the elementary school buildings would not be implemented until the earliest, the 2026-2027 school year.
... Students will be provided with training experience designed to develop functional daily living skills, appropriate social behavior, and communication skills. Students are not paid for this work experience. A Westshore teacher will be assigned along with an aide to provide direct onsite supervision of all students. And there's an agreement between the Westshore Career Technical Education District and the Winking Lizard. This one-year agreement will provide a community-based career technical experience for up to eight Westshore students. All students will be provided with training experiences that are designed to develop functional daily living skills, appropriate social behavior, and communication skills. Students are not paid for this work experience. A Westshore teacher and an aide will work cooperatively with the Winking Lizard personnel to instruct students in related job fundamentals. And then last, we have a transportation reimbursement. In accordance with the Fair Bus Law and State Transportation Guidelines, all students receiving parental transportation reimbursement for the 25-26 school year are listed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Human Resources and Community Services with Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you very much. These are items we'll be voting on at our next meeting. We'll have a total of 36 certified actions, a total of five certified non-employee coach-adviser contracts, known affectionately as ECES, 56 classified actions, appointments, special compensation, salary and pay rate adjustments, 20 ECS classified appointments, and 24 community recreation and education actions, four for aquatics, nine for athletics, 11 for programs, and that's one way to know summer is coming to an end because the numbers have declined in community rec. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the communications portion of the meeting with Board of Education comments. Anyone like to kick it off?
I have a couple. Yes. I feel like it's an important reminder too for elementary school students, you are starting five minutes earlier this year, going until 3:15. I know it will be fun in my house in the mornings for my son. There are a couple of really important things to pay attention in regards to our very Republican legislature and public schools. First one we were made aware of was Ohio Senate Bill 156, which requires a success sequence to be taught in schools, records currently in the Senate Committee for Education. But it was really interesting kind of taking a look at those today and seeing the proponents for them, like Center for Christian Virtue, American Enterprise Institute, which is a centerate think tank and based in DC, home of conservatives, I think it was on their website, Education Reform Network, which again are pretty conservative things. So I certainly would encourage anyone to take a look at those, and I went to their websites, and it's all barely veiled like pro-conservative or pro-Christian, excuse me, Christian nationalist entities that really are blurring the line, right, between separation of church and state and making sure that our schools, we are teaching our kids education and not, you know, Christian values, because as we know, we have a diverse body of students, and we should continue to do that. And the opponents, again, just to kind of get a variance there, there's Planned Parenthood of Ohio, Brunswick Education Association, Toledo Public Schools, Secular Education Association, Ohio Equal Rights. So those who are really, you know, and we are entrenched in public education are there against this. The second one, which is very similar, is House Bill 269. So again, success sequence and character education curriculum. And as it's written, character education here really again is just like how a good Christian should act instead of, you know, how we want to make sure that our students are learning. Line 12 specifically here, respect for lifelong marriage, sexual fidelity within marriage, and sexual abstinence outside of marriage. They have to annually report to Ohio Leadership and data on impact on student discipline, academic achievement. And then starting on line 122, the Department of Education and workforce shall provide limits to free curricula, but it cannot come from an individual entity or organization that provides, promotes councils, or makes referrals for abortion or abortion-related services, which again is kind of blurring that line with our separation there. So reach out, write, talk to your elected officials locally, statewide. This, we're going to keep seeing these things come back, so we need to make sure that we are all being loud. There's not much, once things are passed, that we can do for that. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
I think at one of our last meetings, someone mentioned waking up in the night and worrying about things. I usually do two to four. And seriously, and it's stuff like this. It's also the fact that this month is very quiet in Columbus because people are vacationing. But what we have is a situation designed to put more pressure on local property taxpayers and as a result, eventually tighten the screws on public education. Because by lowering the state income tax, you lower the possibility of funds to be given to the schools, and it makes it self-fulfilling prophecy when leadership in the House in Columbus, Republican House, controlled House, indicates that they don't have the money for fair funding. But they've created a situation where they don't have the money. So I have absolutely zero expectation that we will get good news suddenly one night, but I have every expectation that there will be further cuts to our, the money that we're getting, which is pitiful as it is, even though it's not terrible. I think, I'll ask Mr. Zeeman, but I looked at the amount that we were supposed to be getting, another 400-plus thousand, which I don't know, barely covers our negotiated wage agreement for a year for employees.
Yeah, again, you know, the final budget bill, as it was passed, did have a performance supplement, and the district, because of its performance ratings, is going to be able to receive those. It's roughly about $200,000 per year, so over the forecast period, an additional $800,000. One thing to note, though, as you mentioned in regards to the state's contribution, in 1992, you know, there was a case called Deroff that was first brought, and it was, you know, deemed that the education process, the funding was neither thorough or efficient, was unconstitutional. At that point in time, the state contribution to public education on average was 47%. With the most recent budget bill, that is now 34%. So in the 20, when it was finally decided in 1997, so in essence, the 30 years since then, we've seen the state's share of public education decrease by over almost 13, 14% in that period of time.
And then a subsequent increase in local property tax. So we're losing local control, we're paying more, and we have an agenda of very specific philosophies. So we do think about that. On a good note, the Arts Fair was wonderful this last weekend, and I saw the Lakewood Ranger Foundation had a booth there and was talking about all the good things that they do for our students, and I was happy to see there, and Mr. Jim Maris, who used to be an employee of the district, was there working the booth because he's on the board now. And then I wanted to also point out how fortunate for students and families this Cleveland Clinic Foundation clinics are and the education that they do. When they first were coming in, and I want to think at least 10, maybe more years ago, there was some trepidation about having them here, but I think every year, we're just happier that we have that kind of support, because mental health issues and health issues for our students have to be addressed if they're going to learn. So I'm just, wanted to say how happy I am. That's my comment.
Thank you. Kind of to piggyback on what both of you have said, you know, on the one hand, it's an exciting time of year where people are gearing up to get back to school, and we have some wonderful new programs and facilities opening up with our MEMS and welding and new FSO digs, you know, to take a look at, so that'll be great. I was speaking with a young woman who's a junior at the high school who's going to be one of the new MEMS students, and I hope, I was probably overly enthusiastic when she mentioned that. I was like, really? That's so exciting. So, but it's true, it's, there's some wonderful things going on. I have a, my eldest is going off to college, people have kids going off to kindergarten. So there are wonderful things to be focusing on, and then, you know, with school starting and everything, and I'm glad that we are doing so. That being said, there are things that we need, other things that we need to pay attention to. And, you know, after we went through the harrowing experience of watching the budget reconciliation and signing process this summer, you kind of like to think, okay, we're done with that. But I kind of look at it almost as if it was, they were sort of market testing ideas, and I feel like a lot of those things are going to be coming up over the next two years. And a lot of those times, those things kind of sneak in at 2:00 in the morning, tucked into other bills, so we all have to remain vigilant. We as a board, all of our citizens, you know, we have to work together to keep an eye on what they're doing and to speak up, because a lot of times, that does help, that does work when we make our voices heard. And that's at the state level. There's significant things, of course, happening at the federal level with the dismantling of the Department of Education and the taking away of the protections that that department offers to our students. And, you know, it's a, it's a heavy time for public education, and I personally think that public education is the foundation of almost everything good in society, and it's something that we all have to work and fight hard together to preserve. So I just want to, you know, we just have to keep that on our radar screen, and again, working together as a community, as a Lakewood community, is something that we really have to keep doing. So those are my comments.
Moving down the line. So I'm actually going to talk about a particular agenda item. I've had a couple of people actually ask me about the amending of some of the administrators' employment contracts, and so I just want to explain like what this is that was read into the record last time and will be voting on this evening. These administrators that are specifically mentioned, superintendent, assistant superintendent, assistant treasurer, director of operations and treasurer, have multi-year contracts with finite salaries. These amendments, usually each year, enable the board to adjust these particular compensations to be in line with the cost of living increases that have been negotiated into the contracts with all three of our unions. And these 2.7, like this year, 2.75 increase raise is not going to cover anyone's mortgage or rent. These five salary adjustments have no impact on the number of teachers that we employ or class sizes, but these increases or class sizes, but these increases do serve as a morale boost and for people who work to make sure that our Lakewood City School District is excellent every day, all year. And so thank you very much for your work.
I just had a question from Mrs. Dotman. You referenced two pieces of legislation working through the State House, the latter of which was House Bill 269. Could you repeat that, that first one?
Yeah, it's Senate Bill 156.
Thank you. And then just a comment of appreciation to my colleagues, just for, for your advocacy around public education and awareness of the issues impacting the, not only our district, but, but public education in general. So it's a pleasure to serve alongside all of you, again, without the risk of being redundant. I just want to acknowledge too, as it has been said, that, you know, summer's winding down, fall sports are beginning. I know people are working through those bucket lists for things to get done on the rest of, on the rest of summer. So wish everybody, you know, the best of the next couple of weeks. And I know our, our staff are eagerly preparing and getting ready for, for their return as well. So I wish everyone the best in this as summer winds down. So thank you.
I have one more question. Mr. Zeeman, you'd mentioned the, with the budget bill, there was a performance in there. Is that in regard to like the state report card?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So just to clarify, anyone who is education would know, right, like we are very lucky here to have the resources that we have here. There are other districts that are not as lucky. So as their report cards are not as good, they will continue to lose resources, which will make it worse. And, and eventually, I know, I think it was Youngstown, like several years ago, where the state took over the district because of it. And it's, they're not helping anybody and it's, it's going to be one more, one more reason to close public schools, go against public schools. So please keep those things in mind, just, we are very lucky here, but it, it really is because we have the resources, our families have resources here. Not everybody is as fortunate and the kids that need the most resources are going to lose the most in these circumstances.
And it affects all of us. I mean, what's happening at the state and federal level affects all of us. It will affect, so we can't sleep on it.
Right. So we'll be awake from two to four.
I'll take 3:30 to 5:30.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we have any public comments? Stand by for a moment. Thanks so much, Hall. We have one public commenter, our old friend Linda Beebe. I have to remind you, Linda, you have three minutes.
First off, just to say, you, you, your efforts to deal with this declining enrollment and the fact that there's state legislation there, it's really forcing the board to deal with this issue. I admire the work you've done and just applaud the fact that you're going forward. The reason I'm here tonight though, is the conversation you've been having. Here is a member of Lakewood Legal Women Voters. And on October 7th, at seven o'clock, in the main auditorium at the library, we're presenting a forum titled 2025 Schools and Library Funding. What does it mean for Lakewood? And if you're wondering about how the new state laws and the federal laws are going to affect your schools, our schools, then this is the place for you. So the keynote speaker is Dr. Christina Collins, who leads an organization called Honesty for Ohio Education. It's a grassroots nonprofit group that promotes an understanding of public education and should be joined by Jim Crawford from Lakewood Public Library, Kent Zeeman, Steve Ost. And we will look at how that state and federal legislation is affecting not just the state, statewide, schools statewide, but how it's going to affect Lakewood, both funding and curriculum. So it's, the discussions we've been having at the league are totally in line with your discussion here tonight. We're advising everybody, write letters. It does work, doesn't it, Mr. Zeeman? You know, and, and these two bills especially because they interfere with the separation of church and state and the right of all of our students to, to feel comfortable in the classroom with their own personal and family cultural beliefs. So thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, that date again, though, October 7th, seven o'clock in the auditorium at the Lakewood Public Library. And it's Dr. Collins and Mr. Ost, Mr. Zeeman, and Jim Crawford from the library.
And it will end on time because the library always ends. You are out of there.
Oh yeah, we're looking at 8:30, you know, a handful of questions and out the door.
Thanks so much, Linda.
Thank you very much.
That's, that's great to know and know the league always does such a great, such a great job informing voters. So thank you. Now we move on to other board business. The first item is from Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you very much. We have one classified resignation and it's been requested that we approve on one reading so this job can be posted, I think, probably. And so I move adoption in this resolution on one reading.
It's second.
It's been moved in second. And Mr. Zeeman, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Katzberger.
Aye.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Ms. Clark Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Dotman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second is the second reading of a resolution to amend the employment contracts of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, assistant treasurer, director of operations and treasurer. We discussed this last week and Ms. Clark Sutton just talked about it a bit. And I move adoption in this resolution.
It's second.
We just need a...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving along. The last item is mine. It's the appointment of delegate and alternate to the annual business meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association at the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference. And this is the first reading of this item. Resolution requiring, requesting the approval of the appointment of Mrs. Katzburger, me, as delegate and Mrs. Shaughnessy as alternate to the annual business meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association at the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference, which is in November. And we'll go to the next. That is the extent of the agenda. Unless anybody has anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
We wanted to make sure you were listening.